Good morning, I'm Cynthia Toz, President of the Gaston City Council. And for the first time in several weeks, today the council is conducting a work session. This is the time that we come together to review items that are on our agenda for today, as well as any ordinances that have come before, so they have been routed from the, to the council for consideration. The work sessions are informal and no official actions are taken place. And this meeting is broadcast on Facebook Live since City Hall is close to the public, and we're making every effort possible to give the public access to our meetings. Our agenda items for today is very simple. We don't have any ordinances or resolutions listed for consideration, but we're going to receive several updates. One will be from the EMA concerning the local situation regarding the COVID-19. We'll have something from the Gaston Career Center, and then we'll have the 2020 Census Committee Report. Are there any questions from the council members concerning today's agenda? Okay, we have a resolution that's awarding a bid, 3431, for the 2020 Gaston Landscaping Maintenance to Proscape of Alabama. If Heath Williamson is on the line, I'd like for him to explain, because I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask concerning that particular ordinance.
Hey, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay, first of all, what did, okay, tell us about the landscaping.
Yes ma'am, this is the annual maintenance bid that's put out for landscaping. This is a couple items at a couple locations through the city. This year it covers the James D. Martin Wildlife Park Landscaping and Maintenance at both the Mall entrance side and the South 11th Street entrance side. It also covers the Riverfront Park that is the area essentially north of Chili's and surrounding Chili's that the city owns and maintains. And this year, we added on the area at the venue, certainly at Couso Landing. Last year it was covered under the maintenance contract from the initial construction, so that has now expired and is required to be maintained by the city. So this bid covers all of those areas, we've checked everything, spoken with the contractor, everybody is good to go on our side, so we do recommend approval.
Where does both of those companies located, where are their locations?
They are actually in Edwah County, I'm trying to think where his actual business is. One, I have their original bid in front of me, neither, to my knowledge, are in the city limits of Gaston, but they are in Edwah County.
Okay. You know, and I was also looking at the various bids, and I noticed that one of the, well, Proscape that has the bid, and then the Copeland that has landscape that has the bid, in some of the instances, there were, where one bid was like, the unit price was 50, and the other unit price was 100, but then there were some places where there were high bids for Proscape and low bids for Copeland.
Yes ma'am.
And I would just wanted to, wanted to know, sort of like the difference, and what does, what does LS stand for?
LS, that is lump sum. So, a lot of times we'll break it into each application, here you see visits, cubic fee, there's various unit prices based on the item, and a lot of those, you'll see those throughout every bid we put out, contractors will vary quite a bit on some items, just because they determine where they want to spread out their profit margin, where they want to, how many maybe crew members they put on each site, and each applicant, each item that's required. So you'll see some variation there. Again, that's why with this one, we looked at it, and I did look at those differences as well, spoke with that contractor, like we always do, and say, hey, this is your price, this is where the other bid was, there's quite a difference there in some locations, you know what's required, so if you fail to provide what's required by contract, that could result in termination of your contract. And I got a positive that everyone is aware of what's required, and everybody's comfortable with their prices.
Any comments from any other council members?
Who knew? No, even the 3% wouldn't have helped, our locals.
No.
Okay, all right, the next item, and if Mr. Williamson will stay on the line, this has to do with authorizing a preliminary engineering and construction agreement for an ATRIP 2 project with the state of Alabama, and this is for the intersection improvement at Megan Boulevard and Hood Avenue.
Yes ma'am, this was the ATRIP 2 grant award that the city received for the project you just mentioned, which was great for the city, it's 100% cost with zero match, so the only thing that will be required from the city, from a monetary standpoint, or if there become any overages, is standard with any ALDOT agreement, but as of right now, the estimated cost put forward, reviewed by ALDOT, covers the PE, which is the preliminary engineering, it covers the construction, the inspection from the construction, et cetera. And this one, to my understanding, ALDOT is going to design it themselves in-house, and so this will allow us to get started on that project, they'll begin the design, it'll set up the project on their side to use these funds awarded to us.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Williamson, who determined, I know you said that the design and everything will be in-house, when will the starting date, or does the state be the one who decides when the starting date for the project will begin?
Once they get into the design process, they won't, they have not determined that so far, so they'll get the field work, they'll go through the design and set it, once they hit basic marks of the design, which is generally defined as a 30% review, plan in hand, and what we call a PSNE, and so on and so forth, it's 30, 60, 90%, so once they get into those different levels of reviews, they'll see what's required of the project, and make a determination at that time, when they feel they can actually set the construction date. So it has not been set yet.
Okay, is there, once they start the date, is there a penalty, or is there a penalty for the completion, or how long it takes to complete the job?
Generally with these, there are, off the top of my head, I don't recall with this specific agreement, it's generally about two years, I don't expect it to take that long. I would think, just based on the nature of this project, that design will probably take anywhere from probably eight to 12 months, and then be ready for actual construction, so within about a year. It may go faster than that, there's a couple variables there, if they decide to make some improvements that require right away, that always slows it down a little bit, but again, until they get into that deeper level of design, it's hard to say. But I don't think they'll have certainly any problem meeting the overall, the overall required timelines.
Are there any comments from any other council member, to Heath?
President Toz, I had a couple of questions for Heath.
All right.
Heath, this is a, it's a pretty long contract with the state, obviously, a zero match from the city is pretty nice, you know, and I've read the contract, it's pretty long, what, have you had any history with a contract like this, and are there any gotchas that we need to look out for, or know about?
I do have a long history with these, it's, it's the same contracts that we generally see of the same nature, I don't know of any gotchas on these, the only one is the one that I had mentioned at the onset of my discussion, is if there are any overages. Essentially, the way the contract's written, they have X number of dollars set up for the project, and so if it costs any additional, it will be, it will be required for the city to pick up the additional cost. Sometimes there's an avenue to request additional funds, but it's always safe to bet that there will be no additional funds, especially because this was a grant awarded through the ATRIP 2, where there's limited amount of funds there, a lot of variables go into that. So essentially, the only, the only, I guess loophole, for lack of a better word, that I would watch out for, is if there are any additional costs, we would have to pay it. But in my mind, that is still a fantastic deal, rarely do we get 100% grant, it's usually always at least an 80/20. And so even if we do have to bear some cost, in my mind, especially with the improvements being made on that side of town, this is a good one, this is a rare one.
Sure, okay, well, thanks, I kind of felt the same way, I just, this is the first time I've dealt with a 100% contract like this, I just didn't know if it was something, you know, that you had, I figured you had probably seen this before, but it sounds like a great opportunity for the city.
Yes ma'am.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
I have a question, Heath.
Yes.
Do you know how many lanes at a time that they would block off over there?
It'll be phased, so it'll be part of the actual design, I don't foresee them, I mean, they'll, they'll essentially probably do it different as construction goes, based on what's happening, and so obviously, they'll always leave one lane open, they'll, they will prefer to leave two open, but there might be limitations, or I guess limited times where they have to increase that, the worst case, you have a bottleneck there, which is not what they want. But until we get into the actual design, and they see what's required to phase those things in, I don't know. Now, I do know, history tells me though, on these type of projects with this area, or an area like this with this much volume, it may be a nighttime project, so they may require the contractor to complete it at night, just for those lower volumes, but again, until we get into the actual design, and it'll be their call, I don't know right now. I just know that's how they normally do it.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Heath, with this being, you know, we talked about over there near Runny Walkin' Ford, but I know this is Hood Avenue and Megan Boulevard, but is this sort of the same project where they, they will be changing some of the lanes that's near Runny Walkin' Ford and Jacks?
So that is a, that is a separate project, that is in design now, I've got to get another, unfortunately, that's 100% Gaston funded, but I've got to get a permit for that, and I actually had a discussion this morning with ALDOT about that, so we've, we've got some more work to do before that one's ready, and we certainly want to see where our budgets are, et cetera. But yes, yes ma'am, that one's separate, but it's still ongoing as far as design and preparation.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure, so that everybody would know that's a different project.
Yes ma'am, great question.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, we have, we have another item, which is a resolution that's supporting the Edwah County proclamation of a local emergency, and if I can get the EMA Director, Ms. Gather on, she can give us an explanation of this proclamation.
Hey, I'm on now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The proclamation was done on the 15th following the Easter Sunday tornadoes, we also had damage and debris in the city of Gaston, so we need to do a resolution to support the proclamation as a city, so that we can move forward with any type of potential reimbursement. We have state EMA coming in Wednesday, and they're going to do a drive-through with us and try to estimate cubic yards throughout the county to include Gaston.
Okay, all right, thank you, and we look forward to hearing from you a little bit later on, all right, thank you. Does the council have any further questions or comments?
You meant, Madam President, you just meant in general, just open conversation?
Yes, before we take a short break before the 11 o'clock session.
Yeah, I feel like it would, it would maybe be appropriate to have the conversation here, or obviously, rather than the council meeting, but I know, I'll address the elephant in the room here, there's been tons of talk in the community about hazard pay for first responders, and I spoke with Lisa Rosser earlier, and she mentioned, I don't know if she's on this call, or what, but I think it would be appropriate to give her an opportunity to maybe lay out some of the challenges with that, and some of the perspectives, because she has some very strong opinions. I know Councilman Back and Councilman Reed also have done some research and some comparative analysis on that, so I think it'd be appropriate to address that in some format.
I believe we can, if we can't get her on at this particular time, maybe can at the 11 o'clock hour.
You want to on there?
Doesn't matter, I didn't get an invitation, so.
Okay, she's here, Madam President, if you'd like to talk to her.
All right.
She can do it on my, on mine. Come on.
Councilman Wilson, if you'll just kind of restate your, not necessarily your comments or your question, Ms. Rosser is on where she can hear it, and then she can respond.
Sure, Lisa, thank you for sitting, it's no secret, anybody who follows my social media stream knows that I've made a few comments about feeling like we need to do something for our first responders, and in the form of hazard duty pay, or something like that, and you and I had a conversation earlier this morning, where you explained to me some of the details of that, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to maybe lay some of that out, to discuss some of the challenges, and see if there is, you know, an amicable solution to this. So if you don't mind, just kind of give us the 30,000-foot view.
Okay, I'll be glad to, sorry, I didn't get an invitation to the call, so I didn't realize the call was going on. So I have been questioned by a number of different council people concerning the hazard duty pay. So a lot of what I'm going to tell you, of course, you're going to say, well, that's just Lisa's opinion, but this, what I'm going to tell you is coming from my position as the Finance Director of this city, okay, because that's where, that's my job, it's my job to inform you, and to keep you informed, so that you will make educated, good educated decisions. So in saying that, there's a number of different things, first of all, many, many years ago, and I've been here a long time, but many years ago, hazard duty pay was given to both our police department and fire department, but they gave up that pay in lieu of salaries, an increase in salaries during the negotiation period, and like I said, that's been many, many, many years ago. So currently, the city of Gaston does not have a hazard duty pay policy. I know that one of our council members did some research on it, and it has been discovered that unless you have a hazard duty pay policy in place before the COVID-19 even happened, then it is not a reimbursable expense, okay, so there is no way that we can get reimbursed for that expense from any agency. We do have a number of grants that we feel like we are going to receive, y'all had one last week, if you remember, with the police department, that y'all approved, and we do not have that grant, we have not been approved for that grant at this point, okay? I think we will be, but we're just in that application process, but anyway, but if they get that grant, if you'll remember, a large portion of that grant was going to be used for overtime related to COVID. So, you know, so they'll be getting some overtime that they wouldn't normally be getting because of the COVID pandemic, and so, and that will be, you know, reimbursable to us, because it's grant funds. We think that possibly there is an avenue that we can be reimbursed for some funding through the fire department, also for overtime, but nothing for hazard duty pay. Now, I understand, you're, I understand y'all are elected officials, and you're probably getting some, I don't know what the word is to use, some pressure, most likely from firemen, because I've been here again, I've dealt with firemen for a long, long time, but the thing is, is that, you know, there's, the other cities around us have made the decision to do hazard duty pay, but there again, you've got to look at the perspective of things, we have over 200 firemen and police officers, they have a handful of police officers and firemen. It is also an election year for Rainbow City, Southside, and Atala, so if you don't think that's not politics, then you need to think again, because that's nothing but pure politics. And we cannot afford to be making decisions on politics, we cannot. Now, I'm going to tell you from the financial standpoint, through, and I told, I told Jason this a while ago, I was very highly concerned a few days ago, I was about to have a panic attack, actually, and that's not my personality, but our cash, I'm talking about cash, our cash went down $4 million in the first 16 days of April, okay, $4 million, because we have no cash flow coming in during that time, we've cut off every city revenue that there is, that we bring in from a city standpoint, so we had no revenue coming in, but yet we still had expenses, we're still having payroll, you know, our payroll runs about $275,000 a week, that's just net, that's not including what we're paying to the retirement system and to insurance, that's just net, because that's payroll. And then we've had some other large expenditures that have taken place, you know, we're still having to pay our expenses. But now, this week, like today, our cash is down $2.4 million today, okay? And the difference is, is we've had occupational starting to post, sales taxes starting to hit, because all of that was due yesterday, so the number is going to get smaller, okay? Are we going to wind up the end of April in a loss? I can't tell you that, I hope we don't, because remember, April, I mean, March was only affected by just probably 10 days, okay? We did not have closures of restaurants and all of that, except for about 10 days. So I don't think we're going to feel much from March, it's going to be April that's going to hit us and hit us hard, okay? And there again, the percentage-wise that it's going to affect us is, it is nothing compared to how Rainbow City, Southside, or Glencoe, or Atala's going to be affected, because you look at those few cities, let's just take Atala, Atala has Walmart, and they have a Johnson's, that's their two biggest places, and the tire company, Mayor Means told me the tire company was their, was their third largest, okay, producers of their sales tax. And, you know, but outside of that, they don't have all the retail that the city of Gaston has, they don't have the restaurants that the city of Gaston has, so therefore, they're not going to feel, they're not going to feel it like we're going to feel it, percentage wise, it's going to affect us a lot more than it's going to affect the city of Atala. The same for the other cities, they do not have the retail that we have, they also don't have the industry, the industrial plants that we have, the industries have been shut down for some time now, and let's do not forget, you probably have heard by now, Goodyear is gone, okay, they're gone. And so that is $2.2 million loss in just occupational tax alone with the closure of Goodyear. So, you know, where are we going to feel that? We're going to feel that in this next year budget, because next year's budget is going to be quite considerably lower than this year's budget, it's going to have to be, we've got to adjust for those losses. So right now, as a city, I'm telling you, from my position as the Finance Director of this city, we are in no position whatsoever to be making decisions that have a financial impact on them, none whatsoever, not until we know where we stand. It will be the end of May before we have good numbers, because April's occupational and sales tax does not post until the 20th of May, so at, until the end of May, we will not know, or have a good idea of where we stand. And until that time, we don't need to be making decisions that are going to affect us financially, we can't afford to do that. And I keep telling my employees, they're, I said, you need to be thankful that you still have a job, because it's not to say, there's going to have to be some changes coming, I'm telling y'all right now, get ready, because you're going to have to make some hard decisions. I'm just telling you, some hard decisions are going to have to be made before next year's budget, so you need to get ready for that, okay? We've had to do it before as a city, and we're going to have to do it again, and let's hope that it doesn't involve a layoff, okay? I hope that we don't get to that, but it's not to say that we might not have to have a layoff. So right now, city employees just need to be thankful and feel blessed that they still have a job. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. I'm sorry I preached to you, because I know I just preached it, I'm sorry.
I was going to say that, Ms. Rosser, thank you for the sermon.
Madam President, may I?
Yes.
Okay, my impression was that the police and fire, they just changed it from hazardous duty pay to something else years ago, so you're saying that they don't get hazardous duty pay at all, the first responders?
No, they get it still, but it was, it was floated into their salaries, so they got increases in salaries that year.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so it just floated.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was right, because I mentioned that last week, and what I was talking about hazardous pay for the essential workers, that, that's in public works, and the other ones that are still working, because I, you know, thought that the police and fire was already getting hazardous pay, so that's what I was.
No, we don't have, we don't have hazard duty pay anymore.
I understand that, but it was rolled into salary or something, I remember that much now.
It was, yes, yes, they didn't lose it.
Exactly.
Hey Thomas, it's a kick a can, but in the Public Safety Committee meeting, we've talked to this a long, a long way, and especially with Lisa, this last raise on the police, we kind of incorporated some of my hopes on, on this pay was built into that $2 an hour, it really was, we negotiated that out. I don't want to go into something short-term, most of these cities are given hazardous duty pay for four weeks, five weeks, that is not going to help our folks, I want something of a permanent nature. Now, we did the police, and I'm all for that, but we got fire medics hitting these houses at this pandemic, they're susceptible to this virus every day, that was the Public Safety Committee's commitment to go with them, the fire department, next. Now, I think we'll, we'll discuss that in Public Safety Committee, but we took care of police, fire was next, that was our anticipation. And the $2, remember, some hazard duty was figured into the $2, so that's fine. Anyway, that's where we were on Public Safety Committee, and that's where this ought to be, really.
So since we figured that into the $2, now could we not go back?
Didn't figure it into it, it didn't figure it into it, it was just an agreement, that we came to on $2 would include some of that.
So what I'm trying to say, if we had worded like that a little bit, we could go back and, when we get grant money, to reimburse them for hazardous duty pay?
No.
But I guess we won't be able to do that if we don't have it written?
No.
No.
Madam President?
It's not written anywhere. Hazard duty pay is nowhere in the policy.
Never has been.
Councilman Williams?
Thank, thank you, Madam President, you know, some, something to, to kind of lend itself to what, and I'm just kind of giving this from a finance committee perspective, something to lend itself to what Lisa indicated, I think she led into her comments by talking about some of the potential in terms of reimbursement, grant money, and things of that nature. There are funds in, in the CARES Act, and I think the CARES Act was round one of the stimulus, there are funds in the CARES Act that could potentially make their way to cities, we're working with the Governor's Office through the Alabama League Subcommittee of the Executive Committee to make sure that, that the calculation is such that smaller and mid-sized cities like Gaston are accounted for, there's about, about 45% of that money can make its way to cities, so, so we're, again, working with the Governor's Office to make sure that there's a formula in place that will ensure that, that we're accounted for and that, so there's some possibility there, and that will give us, from a finance perspective, some ability to look at things like this in the, in the, in the near future. And of course, many of you may have heard that this morning, that this afternoon, what's likely to happen, is that there will be a deal reached, and, and, and some signatures secured relative to a half a trillion dollar, $450 billion interim stimulus package, so this will be round four, essentially, and again, it's expected to be announced this afternoon. You know, there's a bunch of stuff in there, and I'm not going to get into all of that, but what, what is there, of course, is about $150 billion for, for cities, and the National League has been very deliberate, there was a conference call yesterday where they And, uh, the National League has been very deliberate, uh, the conference call yesterday where they shared some very meaningful information. But the National League has been very, very deliberate about, uh, petitioning for, uh, smaller, mid-sized cities to ensure that we're accounted for, uh, in, in those stimulus dollars. So a- all of that to say is that there, there're gonna be some opportunities, uh, to, uh, secure some of the, um, some of the, uh, the funds that are coming from the federal government to provide some level of reimbursement and securities for cities that are losing, uh, quite a bit. Um, you know, we've been very, uh, deliberate in lobbying for, uh, OLF, uh, sales tax, business licensing, and all the things that we count as revenue. All of those things will be accounted for in all of the formulas, uh, that determine how cities receive their money. So, again, please, please be mindful that, uh, that there's, there's a lot of background work that's in place right now to make sure that we're in a position not only to, to maintain our basic services and to maintain our basic and, 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 uh, baseline employment levels, but also to ensure that we're looking out for those people who are putting their lives on the line every day. So, so those things are, are out there. And, and also, please note that prior to us voting at the council, voting on the grant, the small grant that we, we received a couple of weeks ago, is we had a conversation with the Police Department and the chief and, uh, and all of those responsible for their financial matters. And, uh, and of course, it was determined at that point that there, there were, uh, more important areas where that money should go and things that that money should be directed towards. Uh, and of course, at that time, PPE, um, um, uh, disinfecting, disinfectant sanitization equipment and supplies, uh, and overtime monies were deemed to be more urgent than, than hazard pay at that time. So, so I think if we're gonna have this discussion, uh, I think it's important for us to be even-handed and understand that the answer right now is not no, but potentially not now. So, uh, so we, we need to be, we need to be careful about that and make sure that we're, uh, being honest with the public and our employees as we talk through.
And guys, I certainly understand the, the sentiment there. And, and I, I will, I accept that it can't happen right now and that, that there are financial barriers that would prevent it. But I do, I am encouraged by the sentiment of this conversation that at some point in the future, there'll be an opportunity to address what many people consider, uh, hazard exposure outside the scope of traditional, uh, traditional work responsibilities. So, thank y'all.
Uh, could I, could I ask Lisa one more question? Is she still there?
No.
Due, due to the- Due to the lost revenue, some of these projects that we've already voted on and approved, are we slowing down on them or stopping them until we figure out the, uh, net loss? To your knowledge, since we don't have anybody else here from the administration?
Well, the answer to that is yes and no. Uh, there are some things that, uh, we have slowed down on, uh, but there are other things that, um, that were already approved by council. They were, the money was encumbered, you know, the, the bid had been let, uh, that we're moving, we're moving forward with. So, um, I mean, I can, you know, I can, Thomas, I can give you, kinda tell you later on, if you want me to, kind of what we're, where we are at and where we're not at. Because there's so many different projects that are out there, and, um, and they're all in different phases. But, but we have not just shut down.
Okay. Well, I'll call you offline, I'll call you offline.
Okay. And, uh, and Li- and Lisa, if you want to, we can, uh, next week at our council meeting, we can have you on to just update us on, or either you or he can update us on projects that we are working on.
Yes, that'd be fun.
But that will be for next week. That will be for another time. Appreciate you very much. Appreciate the council members. We were, uh, and I keep saying this, we were elected to be good stewards of the city. Uh, Ms. Rossa has been hired to be good stewardess as a custodian, and so we appreciate her guidance. We appreciate her honesty. And what we have to do is just to continue to be good stewards. At this time, we will just take a short break, and we'll start back for our council meeting. I'm not sure if it's 11 o'clock. Now, we stopped at 11 o'clock, so in five minutes, we'll start back with our regular council meeting. Five minutes.
Because I don't know how much the title fees and stuff are.
Good morning.
I told him.
We're ready for, we're ready to begin our council meeting. I'm President of the Gaston City Council, and we're meeting again by teleconference. And today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live. And we can also be viewed on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council is now under order. Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the role call.
President Ho.
Uh, District One here.
Uh, Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead us in an invocation.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you right now for your presence, Father, in the midst of all that we're dealing with and, and all that we're facing as, as a country and, and as a society, Father, and across this, across this, this, this world, Father. We, we ask that you will continue to bless us, Father, keep us, Father. Comfort those who are worried this day, Father God. Guide those who are in a decision-making capacity, Father God. Allow wisdom to flourish in the midst of decision-making, Father God. And through it all, Father God, please keep us in remember, remembrance of your greatness and your worthiness, Father God, in all that we do, Father God. Bless those families and comfort those families, Father, who are dealing with the many, many losses, Father God, and the very personal losses that we have realized during these very difficult times, Father God. Continue to touch us and comfort us as only you can, Father. And through it all, we will continue to give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
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 I'd like to begin today's meeting with an update from the Emergency Management Agency Director, Amber Baker.
Hey, um, well, we want to do an update on our COVID-19 progress. Um, of course, stop me if you have questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Uh, right now, we are at, um, 100 confirmed cases. We have had, um, almost 800 individuals tested, and we have between eight and 10 deaths. And the reason I say between eight and 10 deaths, there are some that are still being confirmed as COVID-related. Um, so we're having to wait on those numbers. Um, in saying that, I wanted to give you a little bit of good news. We have 17 out of those 100 that have fully recovered. Uh, but that leaves us approximately 73 who still have, um, the virus or carry the virus. So, um, we need to remember them, help them where and when we can. Um, some other things that are going on, um, we've got nine more days to flatten this curve, um, to the April 30th date. Uh, in thinking about that, I want to encourage all of our elected officials, not just the city of Gaston, but all throughout the county, think about the process of reopening. Do it infected, do it gently, um, not a hard open. We need to see, um, exactly how citizens are going to respond and to make sure our healthcare providers don't become overloaded. And, and I'd also like to say, we need to make sure that our first responders are prepared before we reopen. Fire, EMS, and, um, law enforcement for the city of Gaston need to have the appropriate PPE. It is getting harder and harder to find. An EMA, we have, um, almost run out of everything that we have had in stock and everything that we've purchased. Um, I ask you to please make sure that our law enforcement, EMS, have everything that they need before we reopen and there is another surge in cases. Um, another good bit of information is through the Etowah County Board of Education. We did receive a bus. Uh, the paperwork is done on the bus. And we are, um, going to work with the City of Gaston Fleet Department on installing the bus. That will be our Ambu bus. Um, that's a combination of an ambulance bus, and that is mainly, um, put together for a surge in patients if we had to transport them somewhere. But it's also something that can be used for, um, any emergency or disaster, anywhere throughout the county. We can have a mass, mass casualty event, or tornado, or anything else. So it's another good, um, tool that we're gonna have here. We really appreciate, appreciate the Etowah County Board of Education for, um, helping us get that in place and done. Um, one other thing is, we have told all of our healthcare professionals that we do have, um, some sanitizer. Um, we encourage the healthcare professionals and our first responders only to make an appointment and email us at ema@cityofgaston.com to make sure they bring an half gallon or an 10 gallon, uh, jug so that they can fill up and refill their bottles where they're located. I want to thank, um, Ruth Moffett with 211, Craig Scott, um, who's not only our librarian director, our library director, but is also our VOAD Chairman, um, voluntary organizations active in disaster. They have both worked closely beside all of us through these many weeks and are trying to meet people's needs. And we appreciate them being a partner. And I encourage you to tell them thank you, too. They've put in many, many extra hours for what they've been doing. Um, in your report that you get, you see, um, what our long-range planning is, and that's for life safety, for our first responders, our hospitals, our nursing homes, our assisted living facilities, and our nonprofits. So that's our number one goal right now. Uh, logistics is the next goal, and that's for housing and the distribution of PPE and other, um, cleaning agents and products for those facilities named, uh, at least for the next 90 days. That way, we can make sure that, um, we have on hand and can disperse it quickly, um, if it's needed. Um, then we have long-range planning for recovery for citizen schools, municipalities, and, and our economy. And that's where you all come in. So, um, I hope that you each have a copy of the suggested ways to, um, open. It's the guidance, um, that was sent out on opening up, um, America again, opening in three phases. And if you don't, I'd be glad to send that to Iva. Um, it just gives you a little bit of information as to how to gently reopen. Um, does anybody have any questions about what has gone on as of late? Or something else you're interested in knowing?
Ms. Catherine, would you please talk about social distancing, distancing? I was at the fall this week, just riding around one of my daughter's houses, and I seen there was people up there. There were, some of them was on picnic tables, and they was out on the ground picnicking, and they were real close. Could you kinda elaborate on that for us, please?
Well, social distancing is still six feet apart. Um, also, it needs to be in groups of 10 or less. So we just encourage all citizens, uh, no matter where they are, to social distance. Um, that just helps slow and stop the spread of the virus. We encourage people to go out. I don't encourage them not to, um, because being indoors and closed up for a while just leads to depression. Um, many people have already, um, become depressed, and that seems to be a big concern right now. Go outdoors, but just, um, try to social distance as much as possible, um, in groups of 10 or under and six feet apart.
Hey, Deborah, this is, uh, Councilman Williams. Do, do wanna take the opportunity to reiterate a point that you made a couple of weeks ago, uh, to, to businesses regarding social distancing at work. Um, you know, again, I, I continue to get unconfirmed, uh, reports from people who indicate that, uh, we have employers who aren't, uh, really encouraging or enforcing social distancing in the workplace. So, um, you know, just, uh, as a reminder, um, you know, if you could just touch on that some and, uh, and also a reminder to businesses that, uh, if you're, if you're, if you identify someone who's symptomatic uh, and in the effort, in the interest of trying to move them to an isolated area, please understand that isolated area needs to be outside of, uh, outside of your normal ventilation system. Because to move them into a room, uh, that has, uh, an air conditioning duct uh, is not gonna do anything but make your situation worse, because now they have the ability to infect your ventilation system. So, uh, again, if you could just touch on a couple of those things, just to make sure we're being smart as we walk through this stuff.
Okay. Um, yeah, for our businesses, I think it's really important in these last few days, it's important for your business to keep operating, for you to make, um, the steps that you need to keep your employees safe and yourself safe. So if you want your business to continue to operate healthy, then please, um, make sure that you do, um, separate employees that need to, um, be isolated in an area that doesn't have, um, large ventilation system. You know, we don't want you to, um, put people in a corner and close the door, but we do want you to think through and call public health if you need guidance. Um, our local public health department, Etowah County Health Department, will be glad to, um, talk with you about some of the ways that you can work to keep your business safe. Um, the business is what keeps you going and keeps those families going. So to keep, um, your employees safe, do all the social distancing, clean and disinfect as often as possible. Um, change work shifts, alternate them if you have to, to have just a minimal amount of employees in a location. Um, and if someone gets sick, give them the required time off that they need to get well. Don't, um, don't try to punish someone because they got, get sick. Um, for your business, I think, too, that's just a good, um, thing to do for your employees.
Thank you, Deborah.
Deborah, I would like just, uh, to say thank you to you and your staff and, uh, to Ruth Moffett and Craig also for working with these families that's going through it. Uh, really, uh, just wanna say I appreciate you and, uh, continue doing what you're doing.
Thank you, sir. As you said, it's a team effort. None of us could do this by ourselves. It's the entire city and county working together.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for your update, and hopefully we will continue to hear good news, uh, from you. All right, thank you. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting that was held April the 14th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All right, I'll begin with President Toles.
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
All right, motion carries to approve the minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April the 10th through the 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, clerk, will you take the vote? City clerk, did you get who made the motion?
I did. Thank you. I'll begin with Councilman Reed.
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams and President Tolls?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Right. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. Resolution 233. It's a resolution supporting the Etowah County proclamation of a local emergency. Has the unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All right, this is a motion to consider the resolution as an item of new business today. President Tolls?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
All right, we have unanimous consent for consideration today.
Okay, I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All right, Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
And President Tolls?
Yes.
All right, motion carries to adopt.
At this time, I'd like to call on Katrina Herring. She's the Director of the Gadsden Career Center to give us an update on their operations during the COVID-19. If she can give us a report, call in. Okay. We'll, she'll call back in. We're going to now go to Craig Scott and he will bring us a report from the 2020 Census Committee.
There, I'm hoping everyone can hear me.
Yes, I can.
Yes.
Very good, very good. Well, first, thanks to President Tolls and her invitation to have me today and also to Councilman Back for his interest in the progress being made with our Complete Count Committee for all our residents in the county. Back in February and before the pandemic hit, some of us were concerned about, you know, we wanted to make sure we get everybody counted. So myself, along with Johnny Baker over at Gadsden State and Heather New with the Chamber, got together and we started some activities. We had three different meetings, one at the venue, a couple at the library to try to get the word out. And then the pandemic hit and it kind of changed everything. But before I get into the census update, I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to the library. So.
Oops. Eric, he got muted.
Across the country that have had to change the way we're doing business, of course. But here in Gadsden, they've been working very hard in promoting our online services. We've seen over a 300% increase in our downloadable services, the downloadable books, the movies, and also shout out to our teen department with Rachel and Nicole. They've been doing a lot of videos for teenagers that are very popular. And our kids department, Jill has been doing some online story times that are really, really great. So I'm hoping that some of you have seen those posts. And we've even had a couple of posts about the census and that's what I'm here to talk to you about today. I asked Iva to share a handout that I prepared on Sunday for all of you. I'm hoping you have that in front of you. If you can take a peek at it, it talks about, first of all, the 2010 response rate and for the state of Alabama, and this is the Census Bureau reporting this, it's just 63% of citizens responded to the 2010 census years ago. And here in Etowah County, we beat that, but just 67% of county, the county folks responded 10 years ago. So that's kind of the figure that Heather and Johnny and me focused on, that we want to beat 60%. In fact, we'd like to be in the seventies, well into the seventies or eighties. We'd love to hit 100%, but we all know that's not gonna happen. But as of Sunday, this is what the Census Bureau says for our county. I wish I had figures down just for the city of Gadsden, but it doesn't go down that far. But for the county, we're at 52% right now. So over half of our residents have responded to the census, which is great. And meanwhile, Alabama's sitting at 49%. So we're a little bit ahead. I also gave you a list if you have the handout. It shows all the counties from Shelby at 61% on down to Cusa with only 27% reporting right now. So I'm encouraged by how this looks. We're ahead of the response rate for Alabama and the national rate right now is sitting at 49%. Same with, same as the state of Alabama. So we're ahead of that, but we still got a long way to go. We need to beat 67%. So I think, I think you've heard, I hope you've heard, that for every person not counted, that costs us in federal tax money not coming in to the, both the city and to the county, $1,600 per person. Now, let's say we've got a family of 10 that doesn't count it. So $1,600 suddenly becomes $16,000 for that one family. And since we always do a census every 10 years, then every year, that $16,000 adds up and it becomes $160,000 from one family of 10 not counted over the next 10 years. And we all know that $160,000, with inflation and all, the Census Bureau says it's gonna be even over $200,000 by the time we reach 2029. So I was in the work session earlier listening in and I heard what Lisa said, Lisa Rossner said during the work session to all of us, that, you know, with the revenues of predicament that we're in, it's more, it's more than important, it's critical that we get every citizen possible counted to make sure that we got all that, all that money coming in, especially as we're looking at next year's budget. So what can you all do? I've, I took the liberty of looking at all of your Facebook pages and while there's a lot of posts about the pandemic, of course, and what's being done and you're encouraging your constituents and all, I would love to see some posts about the census and that you all encourage your constituents to fill out their census form, whether online, by mail, or even over the phone. So I'm going to prepare a press release with Eric's help and we'll get that to the, out to the media and to the newspapers. I think it's important that we share that we're ahead of not only the Alabama average right now, but we're ahead of the national average and encourage people that way to fill out the census. So with that, any questions?
Madam President, I have a question for Craig.
Yes.
Earlier, Craig, you had mentioned that you didn't have data for the city of Gadsden. Will you be able to get that information soon?
Ken, I don't think so at this point. Everything I've seen is just at the county level. I do know our local census manager that represents our county and 11 others here. I know him well. So I'll see if we can get some finer figures down for the city.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. That would be helpful, I think. I mean, we're all, obviously, we want Etowah County to do well in the census, but I think for this group of seven council members, our federal funding is tied to the response rate for the city of Gadsden, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm not. So I'd like to get as much data. I don't see how we can manage this if we don't know the scorecard of where we are as a city. So I think I sent you the information on Parca, or that was from Parca?
And Parca had the, had the city's online response rate. I don't know if that's the
total response rate for a city. Are you familiar with that terminology, the online rate versus just any other kind of?
Yeah, in fact, on the handout, I showed what they had, at least for the county for us. And they were saying right now that, and this is as of Sunday, that 35% have responded by internet and that's versus 36 for the state. With 35% by internet and the rest 17% by mail and phone.
Okay, all right. It'd be good to get some information on the, on the city response rate. So if you could, any way you could get that for us, I think that would be very, very important for the federal funding capabilities of the city for the next 10 years.
Is that? Absolutely. Yep, I agree with you. We'll work on it.
Oh, thanks, Craig. Appreciate you jumping in and doing this, man. Y'all are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you also. And basically what he was saying, that one of the things we can do is put it on our Facebook page to encourage everyone to do their census because it is money. I believe Ms. Katrina has come back and joined us. So if we can get her at this time to give us a report from the Career Center.
Good morning. I guess we're having technical difficulties.
Good morning.
Well, I just want to give you a little update what's going on at the Career Center. Although we are close to the public, we are working remotely at home, trying to get people, you know, back to work, of course, with, I'm gonna give you the process, how to file unemployment claim. But before I do that, I just want to say that we're still assisting all our customers. So just call our number and we can still help you build resumes. We can still help you with job search and financial aid assistance. Just because we're not open, we can do a lot of things online. We're still continuing to help the employers. We would do job listings for the employers. On the job training right now should be a hot item because we will train employees at the job sites and reimburse the employer 52, 75% of the hourly wage that the employer will pay. So just because our doors are closed, doesn't mean that we are not serving people. Now, I'm gonna go into the process of unemployment claims. I wrote, I took a few notes here today so I wouldn't forget anything. So I may be looking down, looking at the papers sometimes. Okay? We have two ways that you can apply for unemployment. You go on the website, which is labor.alkabama.gov. Or you can call 866-234-5382. And that's to file initial claim. And then if there's questions about the claim that you have filed, you can call 800-361-4524. So that's two ways that you can file for unemployment. However you file, well, on the website or you call, of course, they're gonna ask for your name. And if you're on the website, your social security number, the entire social security number, not just the last four digits, but the entire social security number. You will be asked to make up a PIN. Please write that PIN number down because you will need it later. And you are the only one who would know that PIN number. Okay? So write that down. If you're applying online or if you call, you're gonna enter in your demographic information. You're gonna enter your contact information. You're gonna enter your employer and your separation from employer information. You will enter employment search and work availability information. And after you've done all that, you're gonna choose payment options. How you would like to be paid, whether you want to be paid direct deposit or on a debit card. Direct deposit is strongly recommended. Okay, if you go the route of a debit card, it will sometime takes up to 10 days or longer. So that's why we strongly recommend direct deposit. While you're online, you're gonna read all your rights and your responsibilities, of course, because you do have responsibilities as well. Okay, after you file, you're gonna conduct work search. You're gonna look for work, of course. You'll file that you're looking for work. You're gonna document that work search. You're gonna file a weekly claim on the phone, on the phone number that's given on the website or the phone number that you are given. After that point, watch for bail or correspondence from the unemployment office. Letter one is gonna determine your monetary determination. Letter two will be direct deposit confirmation. Potential follow-up letters may be necessary. There, there, you won't get a letter confirming approval, whether you've been approved for unemployment. You'd just be paid. If you are denied unemployment, letters will be sent to the claimants. That claim has been denied. And the reason why it's been denied. And there's lots of reasons why and that I can't go into because I don't know, you know, why they would do that. As a claimant, you have the right to appeal that denial. An instruction will be on that letter that you receive. Must be appealed within a certain number of days. I'm not quite sure the number of days, but I'm quite sure it's 10, maybe 10 days that you may have to appeal. But still, while you're appealing, do go ahead and continue filing your weekly claims every Sunday. Appeals can take anywhere from weeks to months, especially with the crisis right now that we're going through. Okay, and if you're not eligible for regular unemployment, you still may be eligible for this pandemic unemployment assistance, PUA. You can go on the website at labor.alkabama.gov and get some information on that. Or you can call 1-800-361-4524. Or you can also email u c dot inquiry at labor.alkabama.gov. And since this pandemic, I just want to give a little update. ADOL has dispersed 164 millions in COVID-19 related unemployment benefits. People are still hiring. Just want to let the employees know that, that people are still hiring. I have one company that I'm working with right now, at least my business service representative is working with, and it's Ray Kenner Construction. You have Exterminator A1, they're hiring. Your grocery stores are hiring. Your delivery. Your grocery stores are hiring, your delivery service people are hiring. People are still hiring, your temp agencies, they still are hiring people. We can still assist you with hiring in our Job Link system. Oh, by the way, that will be replaced, we're going to, we're getting a makeover. It no longer will be joblink dot Alabama dot gov. On April 27th, Monday, April 27th, we're going to have a makeover with dynamic and robust features now, which will be user friendly as well for the employer. And that system is Alabamawork.gov. It's going to be replaced with joblink dot Alabama dot gov. And although Monday is a holiday on the 27th, the Career Center will still be working, trying to get people back to work. We'll be working remotely to extend services in this time of crisis. Are there any, any questions? I have a phone number for employers. If you would just call the Career Center when you needed to file, um, for unemployment, your, um, all your employers, your, um, business owners, if you would call the Career Center, we will give you that number. And that's all I have. You have any questions?
Katrina.
You were very thorough. Go ahead.
Katrina, you gave us the dollars, uh, in terms of the numbers of, the amount of claims that have been put, paid, in terms of the amount of money that have been paid to claim. Uh, do you have the number of claimants? Uh, I think it's important for people to hear that.
Uh, you know, that slipped right through the cracks. I'm not sure, but there's, there's thousands, there's thousands, Councilman.
Yeah, we're probably looking at a couple.
Senator Washington, just on the, uh, speaking, and he mentioned that number.
Yeah, you're probably looking at a couple hundred thousand easy, correct?
Easily, easily, yes.
Yeah, as compared to 10,000 last year, all of last year.
Exactly, exactly.
Ms. Katrina, can you tell me how long you have to be employed before you're eligible for unemployment?
How long you have to be employed?
Yeah, how long would you have had to work in order to be eligible? Because I know some people who, who have been declined, or excuse me, have been declined, it's because they had not been working for long enough prior to the, the unemployment event.
Right. There's a, there's a quarter that we have to look at to see if you have been employed within that, in that quarter. So it's a little, it's a little tricky sometimes.
Do you happen to know what that quarter is right now? Do you know what they, I mean, does it go back 12 months or four quarters or?
Yes.
Is it a set amount?
It's a 12 month.
Okay. So basically, if you don't have work history 12 months ago, you're not going to be eligible for state unemployment, but you would potentially still be eligible for the federal PUA assistance?
Repeat that.
So if I understand correctly, if you don't have, if, if you were not employed 12 months ago, when you go to file for unemployment, you're not going to qualify for state unemployment, but you would still qualify potentially for this new federal PUA unemployment, correct?
Yeah, definitely, most definitely, yes, yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Uh, on the stimulus money, how long will they draw that? If you draw an, if you, if you say you came draw the unemployment and you get $600, how many weeks do you know how long they will receive that?
No, they would have to probably talk to unemployment about that. I don't know how long they would receive that, but normal unemployment is 14 weeks now, you know, that started back in, uh, first of the year, January.
Yeah, that, yeah, Councilman Worthy, the federal government funded that program for the states to pay it through the end of July. And so it just depends on, you know, how the states are administering it. And that's why Katrina can't answer that question directly because it just depends on how the states are administering it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments for, for Ms. Katrina?
Katrina, I do want to tell you that, to please relay to Fitz that we probably need to have you on those other calls because you do a much better job than he does. So make sure he, make sure he hears that from you.
I don't know if he may hear it from you.
No, the, so any, do you have any, any comments you want to offer up for freelance and independent contractors because, uh, you know, there is space for them to receive benefits as well?
Yeah, there is space for them to receive benefits as well, just like I said, with the, uh, the PU, what, what was it, the PUA assistance, you know, whoever may not be eligible for the, um, regular unemployment are definitely eligible for the pandemic unemployment assistance. And if you want, like I said, if you need more information on that, just go to the website, labor dot Alabama dot gov. Because I don't want to try to explain it and, uh, put my foot in my mouth. Not give you all the information that you might need, so just go look at that.
You did a great job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. If there's nothing else, are there any comments about it? We thank you very much, Katrina, and if there's a need, we'll get in contact with you again to give us another update. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, our council meeting is adjourned.